No.
It's probably Kirby up there.
Yeah, Kirby's here.
Kirby, can you hear us?
Maybe you can't.
All right.
We'll switch up and down a couple of times.
Probably assume.
Is that Kirby?
It's Kirby. Up in his ears.
All right, we can continue. Paul Gilbert, anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Okay, with that, we'll go to member updates. Alex? Joe?
Just quickly, this is, this week is the last third Thursday for this year, so remind people, come on down.
Okay. Nothing I haven't. Littleton Road Race, they're still, still accepting registrations for Littleton Road Race.
Six weeks.
Six weeks, yeah, plenty of time to train.
Plenty of time.
Okay.
I just want to encourage people to volunteer for these four new committees. You have until Friday to submit your application.
Joe?
On vacation for the next two weeks, so I can't wait for Friday.
So, you're not here next week?
I'm not here next week.
Okay. With that.
Anyone else here next week, by the way?
I'm here.
Okay. We'll be voting to call the special town meeting next week, which we agreed was going to be on November 4th.
Right.
But, yeah.
Okay. Oh, you know what, oh, mail, that's what I missed. That's why I was wondering why I had ten minutes for organization.
It's okay. Just a few items. One is that we got official word from the Department of Housing and Development confirming in writing that our subsidized housing inventory is at thirteen point nine-seven percent with the addition of the other ninety units from Fifteen Grade Road. The, it also served as a reminder that we submitted the forms for building permits that have been issued for Kimlock Barnes to make sure that that one continues to get on the, stay on the list of subsidized housing. And, and we will continue to monitor Fifteen Grade Road. That, you know, the, the next step is, in order to keep it on, they have to issue building permits. And I think we probably want to have, if we can get an official update from the developer sometime in the next month or so, just see how it's going. We'll try to do that either here in writing or something, but.
What's the timeframe in between them putting, say they don't put a, a building permit in?
It's a year.
A year?
So, it's February of twenty fourteen.
They have to get their first building permit before then?
The, the, the building permits for whatever units are issued would have, they'd have to pull the building permits for the, yeah, in order to keep those hundred and ninety on, they'd have to pull building permits for all the buildings. So, we will work with them and, you know, there are other, we'll be forming a housing committee shortly. One of the things on the air, potential list of things to do is to update the housing production plan, which is sort of our insurance policy to make sure we have a fallback plan in place to help ward off forty B, even just temporarily. So, we'll stand on top of that. We have a letter from Mass DOT which announces the release of additional monies under the Chapter Ninety program for road improvements. It's still not the total amount that was promised to us. The legislature and the governor are still sort of arm wrestling over that, but it's, we had received a half allotment before and now we're getting more and hopefully that we will, as they work it out, they will be getting additional amounts. We have a letter from the Littleton School Committee requesting that the assistance of the Board of Selectmen in having a crosswalk at Route Two A, King Street, at the Onside Apartment Complex. And Jim Clyde has already weighed in on some of the things that we would need to do to be able to proceed with that. It starts with a formal request that could go to Mass, Mass DOT. We may also want to look at whether we would want to do the design ourselves or ask the, ask the state to do it. Did you have any further comment on that?
I talked to one of the people working on a project there and they said submit it to the state and ask them, is their road to start with them?
So, we'll start by asking them.
Now, we've gone over this a while ago, well, probably several times. And what, Jim, do you remember what it was that sort of held us back from doing something before?
Money.
Was it because there wasn't a sidewalk on the other side where they put?
There was a sidewalk at Onside, but you had to put two handicap ramps in and it required signage and you probably had to submit some kind of engineering plan to Mass DOT. It's kind of considered a mid-block, mid-block crosswalk, but it's not really connected to another road.
Something we can get to legislators, too, that are going along in this process?
Oh, sure, yeah, when we shoot it, the request to the state agency, we would, we would work with our legislators, too. So, that's, that's.
It's not like a hundred thousand dollar hammer that the federal government decides to crosswalk, right?
It's still a considerable crosswalk. Well, I mean, when you figure the standards of who you have to jump through for, I think these are probably.
Next, there was a, a request from Alex, which we had staff input on, to look at one-way signs from King on Shattuck Street and what we could do to help fuel that situation.
And staff is on that?
Yes, yeah. And lastly, in this packet is an invitation from the fire chief to attend the open house for the fire department on Tuesday, August twentieth at seven P M. It'll be an informational open house to discuss the potential of fire station renovations at the Twenty Boss Street site.
Is that just for the people on the, the SIBI list, it's townwide?
Yeah, it's for the community that, that they're having a neighborhood briefing prior to that date. This will be the public, this is open public briefing. The chief did want the opportunity to talk with the neighbors first and hear their concerns and then have a broader meeting with the public.
Can we go back to the one-way street concerns for a second?
Sure.
And we, we have any sort of action plan here? We're going to agenda this or we're just going to look for ways to help out or where does it go begin at?
I think we can expect feedback from staff a month from now. I mean, I figure highway and police would have some sort of memo for us on what their thoughts are, how, you know?
Yeah, we can schedule it for, for board action and we may be able to do that. I'll have to look at the agenda, we may be able to do it in time for the next Monday night, the nineteenth. If not, the board's next meeting after that is September sixteenth. So, try to get it on as early an agenda as we can.
How much time do you think you need to get, I mean, you got to drive down there, look at it, write a memo?
I believe both of us have responded to, Mr. Bergman.
Yeah.
I didn't yet.
All right, well, if we can get it done in a month and if we get it done in time for next meeting, great. If not, well, we'll do it, but I think it's, you know.
Can we just sort of turn them loose to find solutions? Do we, do we really have to take action on the board other than if they think that, you know, and so I'm reading what Chief Kelly says, you know, there's some improvements we might be able to make and if we don't have to change a policy or come up with extra money or something like that, you know, this is something should be in there per se to handle.
Yeah, if there's no exchange of money and they can have some.
Yeah, be glad to try that as step one. And we'll see, we'll keep the, our next step will be to update the board on whatever staff-generated solution we can implement and if that's to your satisfaction, we won't need to bring it back for further action. We'll, we'll share with you what that is as soon as it's in place.
Okay. Done for mail?
That's it.
Seven fifteen. We want to go to three B. I don't know if anybody's here. I know that some people coming, maybe coming for appointments, I see Megan and Deapkin here, so we can wait on that one. But you want to move to special municipal employee designation?
Is he here?
No.
Oh, he's not here. Is he coming?
Really, is he coming?
He's actually laid up, so.
He's laid up, okay. All right.
We can do three A first.
All right, Kirby's here, okay. Okay, so, I'll just give a quick summary. As a member of the Littleton Commons Sewer Feasibility Study Committee, we had a couple designations and we have a couple people who want to fill in. So, we met with those people last week and I believe there's a recommendation from the chair and.
Yes, so, on behalf of the Littleton Commons Sewer Feasibility Study Committee, we took about last week, we have two applicants, Dina Plakhardt who is here and Steve Moore, who I believe is just going to represent the PMBC instead of Joe Calentro. So, that's just kind of a swap from the PMBC representative on the committee. However, the committee, the Littleton Commons Sewer Feasibility Study Committee did this unanimously to recommend that the Board of Selectmen appoint these two applicants. We think it will be a great improvement, a positive addition to our committee, get some fresh perspective on the committee, and we really do need these members to make quorum over the summer, so it'd be great if you could consider that. Thank you.
So, Mr. Moore will remain as the PMBC rep?
He will be a new member. We, Joe Calentro was the PMBC rep and he's no longer going to be on the Littleton Commons Sewer Feasibility Study Committee. I think he might still be on the PMBC, but instead of him, Steve Moore will be on the committee as a representative of the PMBC.
Oh, okay.
There's no action for us, right?
Well, no. Dina Plakhardt asked us, Steve. Yeah, right.
Okay.
I'd like to speak in favor of Steve, too. I think he'll be a great addition to the sewer study committee.
Okay.
Richard Crowley, I'm a member of the sewer study committee, too.
All right, so.
So, Steve Moore has not been a regular, I see, he's, I see.
He's a new, he'll be a new addition to our committee.
Got it. And then the citizen at large, your recommendation is that Dina Plakhardt would, and she's, she's here tonight and we.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's here, sorry, there you go, okay. Yeah, we, we did interview her and have a nice conversation with her at our last meeting and she was actually giving us public feedback at the time and it sounds like she's ready. I don't know if you want to say anything, interview yourself, Dina, or speak up? No?
The one thing I do, at some point I have to file conflict of interest paperwork because I am a business owner, although I'm not a property owner in this undertown. I don't know whether anybody had any questions as to that.
I know we discussed it, just to clarify, and it's very similar to the situation Megan had, so I, there was no concerns from the committee, so, I will say.
She can, if we appoint her, she can at least help the town council to get assistance through that.
Yeah, and we could schedule that vote for instance, Monday night, because it would, you'd need to have that vote in place in order to participate.
Are you saying then that she needs to first file any paperwork before the appointment?
No.
Okay.
You can make the appointment, she just won't be able to serve on the committee until.
Until the paperwork's taken.
The disclosure, until the disclosure essentially take the sorts of forms that Megan had to fill out, bring it here, get your approval on that, and then it's okay.
Would she be able to be on the nineteenth, on August nineteenth agenda?
As long as she gets it in.
That would be great, because our next meeting is on the twentieth, so if you guys would approve that, then.
Sure, Mr. Bergman, Joe Bergman on the agenda.
Okay.
Maybe this discussion will come up there?
Yes.
Yes. Will you be able to come in? We wouldn't be able to be an official member of our committee, but you could first more than welcome to come.
It won't get any deliberation or votes, so.
All right. Moved in the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Dina Plakhardt to an indefinite term on the Littleton Commons Sewer Feasibility Study Committee as a citizen at large.
Second. And moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post?
Thank you very much, Dina. Mr. Chairman, just reminded that she has to get sworn in.
Right.
A lot of times I forget.
A lot of new people don't realize that, and actually veterans. Okay, thanks. All right.
Thank you, Dina.
So, special municipal employees, I think we can have a little discussion about this, but basically this is something that we've used when we have employees and board members who are also, that we have employees or we want to be board members. And it's been said that it's just a Band-Aid, that we may not, that there are dangers to do it, but it's also a way to allow people to, make more people available to these positions. So, Keith, do you have any other introduction that you want to give?
Yeah, just to remind the board that the practice up until now in making designations as special municipal employee has been to deal with actual conflict situations on a case-by-case basis, rather than looking at it from a policy, a global policy perspective, which is what the board invited at the last meeting, was could we schedule an agenda item on the matter of whether to, whether to designate all special, all boards and commissions as special municipal employees. So, that's the opinion letter that we have from, from town council, which is, which is attached, where he discusses the, some of the issues that would arise in a determination.
So, the, the public sections are when someone is being compensated by the town for one position and then it's, because some people are prohibited from holding more than one municipal position, and this is, that's for regular municipal employees and the special municipal employees are not affected by that. Is that what it is?
Well, we're, it's only meant to apply to, well, the situation, the sorts of situations that we've been dealing with are dual office holding. The cases where a paid town employee, whether full-time or part-time, is also an unpaid town board member. And in no case here are we proposing that their status as a paid town employee be considered a special municipal employee. That the only, that what's, what has been the board's practice and what, what would, if you adopted the, you know, the proposed motion, you'd be essentially saying that that, in that dual office holding situation, that the individual service as, as an unpaid town board member would be considered a special municipal employee. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't resolve any other issues that they might have, but by and large it deals with the vast majority of the issues that we've been bringing forward. If someone has a personal financial interest, you can't cure it. I mean, if it's, but what we're talking about is where the interest, where the conflict arises only from their holding two town positions, one for which they get paid and another one for which they don't get paid, or where there's no private financial interest at all, then, then the cure for their, for their unpaid town board service is the designation of all of the town boards as special municipal employees. And that's been how we've been, I mean, the last meeting was Park and Rec Commission, there have been other ones for, 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 for boards. Now, it does apply to every member of the town board stating. You can't just say that it applies only to those town employees who are also on a town board, that if you, but for example, when we voted to cure an issue for, for Bill Cole, on one of his boards was the Board of Health. So, the Board of Health, the entire Board of Health are special municipal employees in order to cure the, in order to allow one Board of Health member to have dual service. The law says you have to have the entire board be special municipal.
I know there's been some criticisms. I think that the benefits outweigh the means, but we're getting, we're allowing more people to volunteer and we're opening the path to volunteering, so I support it. I don't know if you want to go around. Alex, do you have anything you want to?
Yeah, I've, I've spent quite a bit of time on this, even today on the phone with Chief Counsel for the Ethics Commission and our own counsel discussing the pros and cons of this. I have several things that, that I'm concerned with. And in the letter to the board, or to Keith, the board has in front of it, it talks about whether, the question asked the town council was essentially, what are the reasons, I'm looking for the exact words used, the reasons why we should do this, but we haven't had a good discussion about the reasons why we shouldn't. And I want to point out a couple of things. From, from the State Ethics Commission's own side is, you know, in bold letters put across is the conflict law is less restrictive for specialists. Now, that's a pretty powerful statement right there. Essentially, what we're going to do if we do this, it allows people to hold multiple positions and it also allows people to come to the Board of Selectmen and get determinations. The two sections involved are section seventeen and seventeen and twenty that they loosely fall into. My concern with it is that people can hold multiple positions, therefore, a member of a town board or committee can, as a result of this, routinely present before another town board or committee. And we know that does occur, we've, we've had to deal with that, it's a comment on ZB A and a few other places where that occurs. So, the question I ask, is that really where we want to go? And is, do we want town officials asking fellow town officials to approve permits, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? The, so, I have concerns with that. Secondly, it is, we're going to put the same people, this will have a tendency to do, I think, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, the same people over and over and over again. It does not effectively encourage volunteers for new positions. And when you use the same people over and over and over again, you have a tendency to go on a set path of thinking because it's the same people. And we should be encouraging the diversity that's necessary to spark a lot of discussion and good debate and a lot of thinking about what we're going into. So, I think we're actually discouraging volunteers by doing this and making it easy for us to just say, well, you know, this person applied, let's put them on, this person applied, let's put them on, and they're all covered under special municipal employee status. And the final point that I'm going to make now, and I hope we engage in a discussion about this, is that the law is very clear that we must address these appointments on an individual basis as the individual boards. And that, you can pull that right from the State Ethics Commission publication, and that was confirmed by Chief Counsel for the Ethics Commission, that the motion as shown on the piece of paper is not compliant. And we would have to change that motion, because that's not something we can't overcome, but to simply broad brush it and say, well, if you volunteer to town Littleton, you're a special municipal employee, is not consistent with what the statute says.
Joe, paint that out or.
Well, I, I understand where Alex has come from, I just have a different frame of thought about, I'm fully in favor of this because I think what we're doing is a Band-Aid type thing. You take a look at the page, we now allow members of the Board of Appeals, the Personnel Board, the Board of Health, the PMBC, Littleton MBTA Committee, the Study Committee for Board Participation, the Charles River Water Botticet with the Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility, the Three Hundredth Committee, the Board of Assessors in the Park and Rec. I says, I mean, we have that many here. I think by doing it for the whole town, it would make sense. And I, I have a different frame of thinking that Alex was talking about, when he was talking about someone being on the committee and presenting something before another board, if they're not involved directly and if, if there's nothing financially there, there's no reason why they couldn't. I can use myself as an example. Ten years ago, eleven years ago, I was on the Board of Appeals, right? If he didn't have this, this special municipal employee, I mean, I was taking a friend before the Board of Health at that time just for advice, I wouldn't even have been able to do that. And that, to me, doesn't make any sense. I, I think it's a great, a great chance for us just to cover the whole thing. Everyone has, has the same thing, and I don't, I don't see it as either discouraging or encouraging participation, so.
Just want to answer one, one of those points is, some of these special municipal employee positions were brought about by necessity. And I'll give the most outstanding example is the members of Personnel Board. The town instructed us by bylaw to constitute the Personnel Board in a certain way. That created the, the conflict of interest and necessitate. Personnel Board in a certain way. That created the conflict of interest and necessitate the use of special municipal employee status. And that's very different, because the town decided what was going to happen, and we were accommodating it. And, well, I'll stop there, and I'm sure there'll be more discussion.
Joe?
When we were together on the twenty-second of July, and I was concerned about individual members coming before the board and asking for an exception for whatever committee or board they wanted to participate in, based on election or appointment, I said that I was uncomfortable with people coming here and piecemeal doing that, which is why I made the suggestion that we have a policy that would apply townwide. And in thinking about this with some more detail, anyone who would want, that this would cover would be a resident of the town, who works for the town, who now has been appointed or elected to a board or committee. And I feel as though we have sixty-four hundred registered voters and adults in this town who could step forward to participate and agree in a lot of ways with what Alex is saying with respect to conflicts. And my concern as well is not everyone understands what the conflicts are and who they apply to. And that's why we found ourselves in this situation time and time again. Not only would I, now upon more reflection, and I've also asked some people what they think about it, I think not only should we not have special municipal employees for everyone across the board, I am of the opinion that we should revoke said status for what has been done in the past. Perhaps with the exception of the employee representatives to the Personnel Board. I think that it is, it's sort of co-mingling funds. I mean, that's something that you're not supposed to do. It feels like that to me in a lot of ways. And when you have an employee on a board who goes to talk to another board, where there's an employee, that sort of co-mingling becomes, it feels somewhat incestuous. And I think it's wrong that we would have that in our town.
All right. Well, I have to agree with Ted and Joe. I think when the townspeople vote an individual into office, a majority speaks, and they put that individual in a position that they feel would be best fit for the town, whether that, you know, if that individual works for the town, shouldn't be restricted, and should be able to volunteer his or her time to any position that they voted in. Now, in regards to committees, and we have a bunch of committees, and there's a bunch of subcommittees, and it's very difficult to get folks involved. So anybody that comes forward, you know, nine times out of ten, we welcome them with open arms. And to say, no, because you happen to work for the town, I just don't think is right, so.
Keith, do we have an update as to the four boards that were committees that we're trying to fill, how many applications we have?
I have no idea.
Because I think that the argument of we have a hard time finding volunteers is suspicious. I think if people are asked, they'll step forward, and so, and I think that has happened.
I think the six years I've been on the board, we've seen some positions go vacant and never get filled, so.
And how many people run unopposed every year?
Right.
And not saying this will fix that.
Got it.
Like I said, I, I think it's, I understand that there's a conflict. I don't see it as much. I don't know why. I just see, I just, I guess if there were a specific conflict, I would, I would, I could be, maybe I'd be against designating that one person, but without knowing where, any specific conflict, and just, maybe I'm just naive, and I just have the trust in more people. And that's not to say you don't trust people. I guess that's just where I go with this, that I expect people to serve ethically. And I think that's the expectation, and I think that happens in Littleton a lot. And, you know, as far as Alex saying that, you know, this gets the same people over and over, you know, that happens now. You know, look at Andrew Samarco. He's on, you know, at least three boards, if not, I don't know how many.
But he doesn't work for the town.
But he's, but he's on, but he's on three boards.
But he doesn't work for the town.
But that's what Alex is saying, is that you get the same people over and over. And even without that, we get the same people over and over. And if there were somebody here who were going for a second board, or a third board, against somebody who's new and or not on any board, then I would lean toward the person who's not on any board.
You didn't look Joey and Derry when she was in front of us for the appointment of the Ed Commission?
I can't speak, I have to look everything on there. I have to look at it.
I understand what you're saying, Ted, but we have to position ourselves as to be in two places. I couldn't agree with you more, that we have to be in a position to have ethical standards that are high. And yet, right in front of me are the words from the Ethics Commission, "The conflict law is less restrictive for specials." And I question that that's the way we want to go, with a broad brush and say that if you're in the town, then all of a sudden, the very ethics that we want have changed to a more lenient requirement. And also, if we don't hold a posture of, you know, we need volunteers to step forward. If we know that, you know, we can call on people again and again and again, doesn't that send a message to the people who might volunteer? That, well, they don't really have to, they don't really need to, maybe I don't need to step up. And besides, they're going to appoint your friends anyway. And, and so we're defeating the whole purpose of drawing in the volunteers. I think this is, this is simply an easy out for us. This is, we want, we want to get out from under the business of managing all of this. And I don't think we should take the easy way out on this.
Okay. Let me, let's table this for a minute, Alex. Thank you. But I want, we do have a public hearing scheduled for seven-thirty. So let me open this up, and then we can either table this, or we can knock out these two things and go back to it. The Littleton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, August twelfth, twenty thirteen, at seven-thirty PM at the Little Town offices, room one oh three, thirty-seven Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass. zero one four six zero. On proposed amendments to regulations and fees for the town transfer station effective September first, twenty thirteen, by amending regulations adopted on August twenty-second, twenty eleven, as follows. No changes. And the fee schedule is here. Everything is the same as previous three years. This is going into our fourth year as PageYouThrow. So this is, Keith, I'm not going to read every one here, but, you know, basically the thing, there is no net change to the fees. So do we want to go through this, or do we want to go back to SME?
This is.
Okay, sorry. So I'll invite the board's thoughts on the, on this, on this topic, if anybody has any.
I think, once again, this is the third year, and I think this is the fourth.
This'll be the fourth.
This'll be our fourth year going forward, that no fees increase and recycling increase, so it's been working great. And it's paying for itself. That's the key. No, no general funds coming out of the coffers to pay for the transfer station. It's all done by these fees, so this is the fourth year in a row where.
And there's no profit, there's nothing else go back in the general fund either?
Right. And that was after several uncomfortable years where you were increasing the fees by significant amounts.
Oh, yeah.
And this, you know, this annual public hearing was quite well attended, because people were concerned about those fees going up, and they've been down.
So is there any public comment on this issue?
Yes, here we are. Board of Health, we were invited, I don't sure why, but I did look over the paperwork. There was, there was a couple of questions that I had, not anything in great detail. But I noticed that the tonnage had dropped down, if I remember right, looking at the charts. And I'm wondering, is that from the fact that they're recycling more, or is there less participation? What's the participation rate now as opposed to where it was four years ago?
Joe, let's keep Bonnie a second. You got to look up her sticker, the number of stickers sold, and that'll give us.
Oh, she's looking it up. I'll give you another one. Do the same thing. The, it was, I don't, my understanding that the more that you haul away, the lower the rate comes. I don't know if that still is a factor, but as, as the rate of trash is, is coming down, are our fees going up?
So we enter into long-term contracts. Were they two, three? How many years are they, our contracts with?
I suppose it was ten.
Ten years.
He's referring to one of the first ones, they had put or pay. You had to guarantee a certain amount of tonnage, but with recycling reform, they did away with those caveats.
And I think we have this, we have our contracts coming up for tonight.
So we just, we just pay per ton, if we're hauling for the tipping for solid waste. So if it's fewer tons, the nominal amount per ton does not change.
Well, the reason I ask is you still see quite a few people with the waste management bins out in front of their house. I'm wondering if there was a way of, you know, try to lure them, if you will, to the transfer station, if that, that does anything for you. I don't know if it.
Well, I think, you know, I talked to people at both, and I think it's, you know, people want to pay, you know, extra for convenience, or, you know, that's the big thing here, or whatever, you know, they won't, they're okay with it, so. And some people are telling me it's even not, there's more. But to back to your first question about, so as far as the total tons of waste disposed is going down, and is that because of participation, which is a reflection of the stickers?
The stickers, the number of stickers sold has declined slightly since we went to the PageYouThrow structure. Maybe like twenty-five, thirty stickers annually, so it's out of eleven hundred. So it's not a, it's not a huge creep that has diverted to other sources. The main difference is that the abuse that we had under the old system, where people would share stickers, that's gone, because you're paying per bag now. So you're, when you dispose of that bag, you're paying for it right away. So the operation itself has become self-supported under that. So, that much.
How about recycle, Bonnie? Are they recycling more, is that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the rates have gone up, but we do see a decrease, because we have, like, the bin here for paper, and there's several of those around town, and people use those quite a bit, so our paper numbers are down.
Okay. Competing with ourselves, or?
What's that?
Competing with ourselves, you know, yeah, some of those. Bonnie, also, did they, stickers, do you see a drop annually, or was that twenty-five, thirty stickers the first year?
No, over the, over the last four years.
It's just, you know.
Just a couple every year.
Five or six every year or something, okay. All right. Any other public input? Anything else on board?
Couple of things. I won't be the first one, but I will admit, this has been a very successful program. And my concern is, and it's not so much with whether we keep no increases in here, but we should still be, it's been four years, let's put it that way. And, and we need to look at whatever the next step is, because the industry has changed in four years. I was online this morning, reading various places across the country where they were talking about single stream, and there were some people for it, there were some people against it, so on and so forth. But one of the key points was from somebody who actually was speaking against single stream, was that the industry has changed, and it's changed a lot, and it's going to change. And so I think this doesn't stop us from doing that. When we discuss a contract later, there might be some concern with some of that. But I don't think we should just concern ourselves alone with no increases. We should look at what's coming and how we can incorporate that in. So I guess I would like to say, take the words, take the word increases out and put with no changes. There was a lot to say for a change in one word, but.
No, we have personals.
The goal, the goal throughout all of this has been effective recycling. That goal has, to whatever degree we have for measurement, been successful. But our goal needs to continue on four and five years from now. It may slightly change, and we may be able to improve even further. We may be able to find savings. Maybe we can go down. And maybe we can speed up the efficiency by changing with the technologies that go on. But I don't, I think our goal of just maintaining fees, that was the good starting point for us, of not going up anymore, and we've been able to hold that. But that's not the end point for us.
Anything else on board?
I have a comment. Well, I actually checked with my neighbors up and down the street, because why, why are you using waste management, since we've gone to this other system? And the comment overwhelmingly was, I have a little car, and I want to keep it clean. Now, there are people who long commutes, they've gone to small fuel-efficient cars, they don't get home until seven o'clock, and they want to keep their car clean. So there's the time factor. They can't get home in time to use it. They want to use their weekend. And there's the factor of thinking, you know, if I have to transfer my trash in my car, it'll be dirty.
That keeps my cars almost dirty.
I wish that were the problem.
Yeah.
I gave up hope of trying to.
I'm just wondering, I think that.
For the record, name and address?
Bureau of Colin Newtown, Rose. I'm just wondering whether we could do what I think some surrounding towns do, which is to make a profit from our recycling. And that would certainly mean no single stream. But I think with some towns, very successful in separating and making money from.
Bonnie, Keith, are we allowed to make money off of the transfer station? And so in other words, we would take, we would take some excess from the transfer station and move it into the general fund, is that correct?
Well, if you made, if you made more from recycling, you'd lower the fees.
Yeah. So you can't really make a profit, right?
Well, you could, well, if the market, it depends on when the market will air, but if we were able to make more from the sale of our recyclables, then that, then that would allow us to charge less for the disposal of solid waste, since, since our policy is that one subsidizes the article being.
I would not like to see the town making money on trash.
No, I don't, I was just trying to get the point. When you say make a profit, that would, to me, you'd make, you'd have excess from the transfer station that you would move to another department. Is that kind of what you, into the general fund? That's kind of what you were thinking?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
No.
That, that we can't do. Okay, but we could, everything we do has to be reinvested to that. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Town Code, Chapter one eighty-one, to approve the fee structure for the use of the town of Littleton's transfer station effective September first, two thousand and thirteen, is contained in the public hearing notice with no changes for stickers or bag fees from their current levels.
Point of view, you want to close the hearing?
Good point.
Move, move to close the hearing on trash.
Second. There's been, move in second to close the public hearing for transfer station fees. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now you need your powdered wig on your head. Okay, so you say so.
Yeah, there's also another motion on table.
Second.
All right.
Okay. Most remain second to approve the transfer station fees for September, starting September one, twenty thirteen. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed. All right. Let's go back to, oh, let's, well, it's not a public hearing. Do you want to stay with, let's stay with Highway Department here, and go with the solid waste recycling contracts. So Jim, we have two different options here. Do you want to bring, or Keith brings up on these options?
Yeah, I'll invite Bonnie to do that, just because, because we have a current contract which, for which we pay eighty-eight dollars and twenty cents per ton, and that number went into effect on July first of two thousand and thirteen, just went into effect. And that, and if you take no action tonight, that, that will continue to pay into effect. However, Bonnie and Jim have identified two alternatives that we may want to consider in amending the agreement that, the existing agreement that we have, which ultimately, over time, will result in lower costs. And we've got two options, and one, you want us to vote?
The current contract that we have with Covanta expires in June of two thousand and fifteen. So we've got two more years to go for this contract. We're at eighty-eight, twenty. There's an escalation clause each year, so it goes up a little bit every year, and has for the previous eight. So we are currently at eighty-eight dollars and twenty cents per ton. And working with Tessa David from Mastos, who deals with a lot of the other communities in this area, Groton, and I think there are maybe two, or.
Ashby.
Ashby.
We would turn that.
Yeah. So she's very familiar with the area. She's worked with Covanta and the neighboring communities, and has been able to come out with an interesting deal for the town. Again, the last contract that we had was a ten-year agreement. She's worked out with Covanta to add an addition. She's worked out with Covanta to add an additional three-year term onto our existing contract. So we'd be essentially negotiating a five-year contract. If we do that, then Covanta gave us two different offers. Option one would keep the rate the same for this year, which is what the transfer station fees are based on. So we will be fine for this year. For fiscal '14, it would drop the rate down to seventy-two dollars. In '15, seventy-two. '16, seventy-three. '17, seventy-four. So, and then there's another option to change the rate this year to seventy-seven, seventy-seven next year, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, and eighty. And looking through what we've disposed of, I would think that the first option one would be the most agreeable for a couple of different reasons. We're kind of squeezing the transfer station fee structure this year in that it was very close in trying to make it self-sustainable with the same rate structure. So by lowering the rate for next fiscal year, I'm hoping that we'll be able to, you know, at least not have to have an increase. And maybe if we're going to make some changes, this would help and looking forward to do something like that. The second option two is also a very, a very good, you know, offer, but gives us less in overall lifetime savings over the contract. So my recommendation would be option one. And again, not mentioned here, but option three is to just stay where you are and we'll see what the rate is next year. So it's a very interesting opportunity. I thank Tessa for doing the legwork on this.
That's awesome.
Is there a minimum tonnage that needs to go out?
No.
And I think everybody's familiar with this vote. Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, we still haul our own, right? So all, any increase in disposal due to fuel or trucking or anything like that, that's on us anyway. Is that correct?
Yeah, because we have a contract for haul. We have a contract for haul.
Okay, we have a contract haul, so it's separate, it's broken out separately. Okay, so this stays, this is locked in, fuel, anything like that? Yes, okay.
This is just, this is no brand.
What is the opt-out on the contract?
I believe that there is no, you know, opt-out. I need to go through the terms with town council. But he's proposing the same terms that we had previous, just an extension of three years.
So I think my only point in all this is, the point I was just making is, this locks us in to the same thing for the next five years. And if we go back nine years and look at the transfer station, it was very, very different than it is today. And I think five years from now, the market is going to be very, very different. And if we're moving towards making it more convenient for the residents and getting a higher recycling rate, which might mean a single stream, under this contract, we're probably not going to be able to do that.
This is just a hauling. This is just a hauling. This has nothing to do...
Well, this is a tipping fee for the solid waste, not for the recyclables. So...
So it's the amount of...
This is for the non-recyclable.
Right, so the trash.
The trash.
Okay. And there's no minimum tonnage?
No.
So we could end up sending seventy-four dollars worth of trash in FY '18 because we're doing such good recycling. So there's no risk?
We wouldn't be sending that because it's what, five tons per container, ten tons?
Those big... You're basically fresh when it got there.
The only reason being that some other solid waste disposal facility sets up shop somewhere else and charges a lower rate, which is why they want to lock us in.
But again, I mean, through negotiations and through, what is Tessa's...
Tessa Mastos.
Yeah, Mastos. We've able to negotiate out of a five-year contract for even better rates, so. That's fantastic.
You have to, you have to look at the facility itself, it's a well-run facility.
It is.
You know, they're there for the long term. If you go to a landfill, they, you know, they could change the rules at the incinerator as well. But if you go look at the operation, it's a well-run operation. And the concern for me is making sure you can get rid of your trash whenever you need to. And they've done well for us for over 25 years.
Good, okay.
And do they incinerate all the trash?
Yes.
Ready for motion?
Right. Move at the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize execution of a five-year renegotiated disposal services contract for Covanta Energy of Hebrew Mass through June 30, 2018. Option one, at per-ton rates of eighty-two, twenty in fiscal year...
Eighty-eight, twenty.
Eighty-eight, twenty, I'm sorry. In fiscal year '14, seventy-two, in fiscal year '15, seventy-two, in 2016, seventy-three in 2017, seventy-four in 2018.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Five minutes before our next public hearing. Alex, you have the floor on the special municipal employees.
Are we going to finish the highway matter?
You've got two more highways, you probably get that in a five minutes. I think this conversation is going to be longer.
You want to bet? All right. Oh, I see, I didn't see what you said.
Five B.
Oh, I see, okay. You didn't make them Bs and Cs on the agenda, I'm sorry. All right. Okay, so now we have another contract for recycling. Jim, Bonnie, and Keith.
Let me take a second. Basically, this is an extension of an existing contract that we have with Devon's Recycling Center. The rate is the same, it's for the construction and demolition materials and bulky items that come from the transfer station and need to be disposed of. The rate's seventy-five dollars per ton for the period starting September 1. It was last year also. In fiscal 2013, we spent just under eighteen thousand for these services at the seventy-five per ton rate. Jim, these services are exempt from 30B, so you don't formally have to put them out for bid, but Jim did call out to a couple of different service providers and got rates from a hundred thirteen to a hundred and eighteen dollars per ton. So this is a really good program. And it's local, it's close, so the hauling is...
So this is the Devon Recycling Center?
Correct.
Seventy-five bucks a ton for the stuff that they must find in there, it's got to be a bargain.
Is this entirely private vanity or is this to the state?
No, this is a private, yeah.
Completely private.
Where does this stuff go?
They separated and it goes...
It's all just...
Different.
Thank you so much, Bonnie.
So the construction and demolition materials, those are coming from residents?
Yes.
Or businesses also permitted to take their...
It's mostly residents, there's a few people that live in town that are contracted, but they usually don't come in there.
Okay. So this would apply if I wanted to bring a couch in, is what you're saying? Okay, do I pay a fee then when I bring a little couch to you? Okay, thank you.
Ready for motion? Yep.
Move at the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize execution of the disposal service agreement with the Devon Recycling Center, LLC of Devon's, for the disposal of construction and demolition materials for recycling at a rate of seventy-five dollars per ton for the period of September 1 through August 31, 2014.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Household hazardous waste.
This one, we have an intermunicipal agreement with several other communities for household hazardous waste program, which is located at Devon's. A year ago, the original towns voted to allow in the town of Shirley. This year, we're being asked to allow in the town of Ashby. And that's all this item is about.
Move.
Just letting them into the club?
That's it.
Letting them in.
Hazardous waste.
Do I have to abstain if I have family in Ashby?
No.
Okay. Ready for a motion?
Move at the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Master and Law, Chapter 40, Section 4A, to authorize execution of the second amended to intermunicipal agreement by among communities in the Devon Regional Participating and the Devon Regional Hazardous Products Collective Facility Program to admit the town of Ashby into the collaborative.
So all of you in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Could I answer, I want to answer Peter's question about why the Board of Health was invited to comment. And the reason is, is because the statute says so. In fact, in some towns, many towns, it's the Board of Health that sets the fees for transfer stations. So I don't want to give anyone any ideas here, but that's, the statute doesn't allow...
I'm perfectly happy the way it is.
But that's why.
But he wants to know because...
But that's why the Board of Health was specifically asked for comment.
But if he has to, comb his hair, put on a clean shirt.
He wants to know why he's coming in.
Did he do the math?
No.
All right. Eight o'clock, public hearing.
Mr. Chin, I'm going to recuse myself from this as I have a son that works part-time.
Okay. Board of Selectmen, public hearing, common victor or license application, Littleton Liquors, LLC DBA Littleton Liquors, 320 Great Road, Littleton, Massachusetts. The Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, August 12, 2013, at eight o'clock PM in room 103 of the town offices building, third building, 37 Shag Street, Littleton, you're making me nervous, yeah, Massachusetts, to consider the application for a common victor license as requested by Dominic Seven, Jr., Littleton Liquors, LLC DBA Littleton Liquors, 320 Great Road, Littleton, Massachusetts, 01460. Comments thereon may be submitted in writing to the Selectmen slash Town Administrator's Office, 37 Shag Street, Littleton, Massachusetts, 01460, by noon Friday, August 9, 2013, or in person at the hearing. Did we receive any comments?
We did not. We had comments from staff who had no additional comments from when they recommended the original issuance of the liquor license under Chapter 138. This now is the common victor license under Chapter 140.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi, Mr. Seven, go ahead.
Dominic Seven, I'm looking for the license to be able to sell snacks, maybe juices and dairy products with the option of selling cheese. If we have wine tasting, probably would notify the Board of Health in writing if we were going to do that. But mainly chips, beef jerky, gum, candy, stuff like that, you know?
Okay. And it's very clear what he can and can't sell in this...
We already have something to wash it down, so...
Yeah.
Well, this is the fear of the breath.
Yeah.
Very wise.
All right. Open up for comments for the board.
I think it's a straightforward...
Okay. All right.
Are you the only liquor store in town open till 11?
No, we close at 10.
Oh, the opening patience is 11?
Yes, for 11. And we decided, anybody who wants anything after 10 o'clock really doesn't need to be served.
The license is till 11 and right now it seems that the traffic starts at 10 and I go to 11 around the holidays.
Oh, I see.
But it's their option.
The posted hours are till 10 PM currently.
Yes.
I see, thank you.
All open up for public comments? Hearing none?
Well, from a health standpoint, we don't have a problem with that, but they're trying to do, they pretty much have done what we've asked them to do and it's, we don't have a problem.
Okay. If we have anything else, we can close the public hearing and get to a vote.
What kind of chips?
I invite everybody to come over and check it out. I know, even if you're a teetotaler, you have to see it. I brought a real clean place, everything's nice and neat and fully stocked. I think I'm in addition to the necessity of some of the people in the community.
I haven't been in there a couple times over and over. No, it's a nice place, nice place.
Would you move to close the hearing?
Yes, we will.
I move to close the hearings.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Move at the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Master and Law's, Chapter 140, Section 6, to approve the application for a common victor license as requested by Dominic Seven, Jr., Littleton Liquors, LLC DBA Littleton Liquors, 320 Great Road, Littleton, Mass.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Good luck.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thanks.
He's not getting a raise.
All right. Sports play. You go with the, it's not a public hearing, I see the police chief here waiting diligently. Bobby, take less time than SNE, do we want to go to that or do we want to go to, back to SNE?
Well, with the exception of how the motion's got to read, apparently it has, it's not right, so we should table this even for our next meeting.
Yeah, that was...
If there's an issue that Alex points out, then it may have to be modified for future use.
Could we also, I see here with respect to Alex's point, Attorney Harrington White, you have asked me how the town would benefit from such an across-the-board designation. Couldn't we ask him how the town would, they detriment from an across-the-board designation? Could we have that answered?
Yeah, what he was asked is what the impacts of it would be. I was not pejorative.
Can we ask him at the start of that point? So we can be better informed.
And then how he would, how he worded it and maybe Alex...
Yeah, my read of his letter, he gave you the pros and the cons. If you wanted to rewrite his introduction, you can do that.
I guess the only con that I wrote, read in it was about the individual.
Yeah. So when would you like to reschedule this matter?
A week from tonight?
What's that?
A week from tonight? Are we meeting a week from tonight?
Yeah, but I'd like to be involved.
Okay, the 16th of September is our next meeting now.
Do you want to take, table this until September 16?
And Alex, if you have comments, what you know about the wording, obviously, you'll communicate with town council on that.
Yeah, we...
Tom, everyone knows the wording that I pointed out.
It simply said, votes should be taken individually for each board or position being designated, expressly naming the positions to be designated. And that's out of 268A.
So, right, and we can have that motion for your consideration on the 16th.
Okay. On September 16?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so this is, now we'll move on to the dangerous dog update. Chief, I'll just roll right into you with this, or with the interesting that we are, based on our, it's just the last time that one dog has already been euthanized. We all understand that. And then there's two more that you have to update the status on.
Correct.
Okay.
As you stated, one dog was euthanized on August 1. And the board put a stay on the euthanization of the other two dogs that were declared dangerous also for 30 days. And that expires this Friday. The board gave the owner of the dogs, the opportunity until that time to present the board with an acceptable proposal for the potential re-homing of the dog. The board has not received anything in writing as of this moment, nor have I. However, today I did receive a phone call from the owner. She stated that she thought her paperwork was due this Friday instead of last. She has verbally agreed or proposed to me and asked me to relay to you that she would like to sign over the ownership of the puppy, known as Bonkers, to Meg Mizoni, the animal control officer from Westford. And my understanding is that Meg and Rosemarie have spoken this afternoon after my conversation and that they will be working that out if the board so approves.
Okay. Let's take, separate them if we have two separate issues.
Okay. Yeah, we do. I was just, because we have a deadline on Friday, we set that Friday, I just wondered if in our discussion, the board might be amenable to delegating acceptance of that agreement to Keith and the chief.
Okay. All right. Let's get, all right, take that, let's take August first, then take August. Okay.
Rather than have us have another...
Yeah, I'm not even sure that that's the right calculation of the date. The hearing was on the 15th, she was served on the 19th. Thirty days on the 31 month would be the 18th, which is a Sunday. And I would think if anything, we'd give her the extra day, not cutting it two days short.
I was notified that the order was effective upon signature of the board on the 18th.
Right, okay.
That she had already been notified that, of that, obviously, at the hearing which took place, which took place on the 15th. So that's where I came up with that. As I said in my previous emails this afternoon, if one of the dogs was to be euthanized, we would not do it until next week. So I'll go on to Atari after.
Okay, so at this point, we have, this board made the determination that Bonkers is a dangerous dog. So at that point, we have two options, is to allow it to return to its owner or, you know, with certain restrictions, which we determined was not the... know, with certain restrictions, which we determined was not feasible last time. And so the only other option is to order the dog to be euthanized. And it's, so I imagine in order to not have that dog euthanized, we would now have to order this dog, change our order, and have it not ordered as a dangerous dog? Is that true, Keith?
No, you don't have to alter that determination, because what you're doing is you're, what we had framed initially with the vote is that you are acting to accept the owner's proposal to allow the disposition of the dog to your satisfaction. But pending, but pending that, because you have no other, you don't have any other safeguard that, about what the future of that dog is, unless you, unless it's declared as dangerous, unless you're working within those parameters. I think arguably the only, since we haven't got the details worked out either, as was suggested, that if you, if you vote tonight to authorize us to authorize staff to accept a, essentially, accept a, an acceptable proposal by this Friday on your behalf, or else, you know.
Need again.
Yeah, or extend it to a later date, or, you know, or say that, you know, you've had enough time, it's either by this Friday or the deal's off.
We have a proposal before us that hasn't been formalized at this point. But you're confident with Meg and that Rosemary have spoken, and, you know, she's told you you have to go on her word. She told me on the phone that she would. Transfer ownership to Meg. That's correct. And then Deputy Chief spoke to Meg after my conversation with Rosemarie, and she confirmed that. So I will, I will ensure that the agreement is in writing prior to Friday, and if the board so designates Mr. Bergman to approve it on your behalf, that'll take place. If it does not take place, then we will euthanize next week.
Yeah, want to add a check to balance? I mean, you're going to be going through it, and you're going to be reviewing it, so would it be your recommendation to Keith, and then him to make the final decision, something like that?
I'm sure we will. Yeah, I mean, we'll be working out that you could, under my statute, you can authorize me to do anything on your behalf, and with the condition that it would be, you know.
I'll work out the next vote and give it to Mr. Bergman.
Yeah, because you seem to be doing the legwork on it.
Yes, yes.
So, you know, you make the recommendation to Keith, and you make the action on your behalf. Yeah, does the board have any conditions? I mean, I think it just needs to, I think that obviously it needs to be something in writing. It has to be clear that the dog is going to someone who knows how to care for dogs. You know, is there anything about a condition of sale? What if somebody who knows how to take care of this dog takes it and then gives away or sells it? You know, is there?
You saw the parameters that I put on the proposal that she had to submit to us. It would basically be the same thing. I think, you know, just the fact that we have a trained individual that's willing to take the puppy, and Meg Mizony, who is a, you know, in animal control and more known throughout the canine mushing community, has a, has a good trainer, so.
So, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the proposal from Rosemarie DiGiovinano. Act it again. T.G. inventory. Don't look at it. I know. T.G. inventory of 261 Goldsmith Street, relative to the placement of Bonkers with Miss Meg Mizony, Animal Patrol for Westford, Mass.
Subject to the approval.
Yeah, subject to the approval of Chief of Police of Littleton and the Town Administrator Littleton.
Is that sufficient to give you that?
Mm-hmm. Second.
Motion remains second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay. So now we move on to Atari.
As I advised the board, or at least the chairman and town administrator, a rescue group from Maine came down to view both dogs, actually spent the entire day here, and spoke to Rosemarie about taking both dogs. That broke down because of the declaration of dangerousness by the board. Obviously appropriate, but they apparently did not want to take that on. Rosemarie has asked me to pass on a request of adding one week from today as an extension on the current stay for Atari. And once again, she has talked to Meg Mizony about that one week, and they believe they may have a viable option that they'll be able to wake up, work out in the next week.
I'm hesitant, just because, I mean, it's been a month, and it hasn't, and it hasn't worked out. And, you know, I'm just hesitant that something could be done if, you know, I mean, we sit here a week from now.
We do meet in one week, so.
They got to Friday. I mean, it's the weekend, and you won't put the dog down until next week anyway, so. That's correct. You know, you've got a week as it is.
We should compassionately extend another week for Atari. My suspicion is that the rescue group perhaps didn't get the full picture until they arrived in Westford as to the dog's status. And that's why the, it broke down the idea of taking that on.
And also, but I also ask the question, did she start soon enough, too? You know, had she started, you know, a week, you know, before, you know?
She might have some other things going on to her.
Yeah. No, just when we give a month, you know?
So a week from tonight would be next Monday. That's correct.
Again.
That's correct. And I will have a proposal before you at that time, or else I will have a recommendation that Atari be euthanized soon thereafter.
So you're in favor, you're recommending, or supporting the one week?
Yeah, go to extend it through the 19th, or do you need the 20th? As an extension, do you?
No, to the 19th.
Okay. Okay, so moved that the Board of Selectmen extend the euthanization order till, pardon me?
The stay.
The stay of the euthanization order to the 19th of August, 2013, with respect to the dog Atari.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So, Chief, I know I've heard a little bit about this going on by the serial letter, so why don't you go ahead and?
Actually, I'm going to ask your alcohol agent, Sergeant Patterson, to present this to the board.
That's fine.
If that's okay.
Yep.
Sergeant Patterson.
Okay. So you want to talk to us, and you have some thoughts on, on an update on the public comment?
That's correct. I'm requesting to set up a hearing with the liquor license owner of the public comment. We've had two incidents that I believe I forwarded you a letter updating you what those incidents entail. And I believe we need to have a hearing in reference to the two incidents and violations of possible liquor licenses.
Okay. Said I've approved the letter, and, you know, obviously, you didn't have strong reason, so I think, I'm not recommendation, I think we should schedule.
I agree. Moved that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Master and law, Chapter 138, Section 64, to schedule a hearing for Monday, August 19th, 2013, at 8:00 PM to consider whether to modify, suspend, revoke, or cancel the all-alcoholic pouring license issued to Common Foods Inc., Gregory P. Ellers, manager for the Littleton Sub Shop property, Pub Omnicomment, located at 486 King Street, Littleton, Mass, for the alleged sale of alcohol to intoxicated persons on July 12th and July 26th, 2013, in violation of Master and laws, Chapters 138, Section 69.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Mr. Chair, I just have one question. Being the alcohol agent, have you, I know we just, what, eight months ago, really? How long has it been?
About half.
Eight months? How, can you give us a little update how your process has been going out to the other establishments?
Things have been going pretty well. The communication between the license holders and stuff like that have been going very well. Right after we were appointed, myself, Detective Fernandez, and Sergeant O'Donoghue, we had meetings with all of the liquor licenses to identify who we are and what that entails. The cooperation's been going really well. We've been in the process of trying to set up some compliance checks coming up in the future, and running those, so.
Standing.
So far, so far, everything's been going really well. Then I think it'll continue even after this.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
See you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
And now we have an update from the Fire Department for the right application. Deputy Chief?
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Very good. So we have two grants that came up in the last, or over the past month, that the town will be eligible for. I'll talk about the first one, it's actually done through a meeting, it's called the HMPG grant. Essentially, this money is, money becomes available after disasters. So it's kind of one of those grants where the money's available, but only because somebody suffered unfortunately. In this grant, what we're looking to do is to put a generator here at Town Hall. This enables the community to have a backup shelter site for our senior citizens, so we'll be able to power not only the Town Hall library, but also the Council on Aging, make sure that their kitchen is up, can operate, can function, and feed people if needed. And in order to be the most hated person in town right now, I'll say that Town Hall won't have to close if the power goes out. I felt burned a hole inside my head to that glare.
Who said I could water it?
Nothing I could do about that.
My word with the chief sent it.
Somebody's going to be the bearer of good news, I guess. So this grant, we're looking for about $120,000 for, for this generator. The town is required a 25% match, however, part of that is all in-kind services. So us meeting here tonight actually would technically count towards this grant and meeting our match. Anytime spent writing the grant or going out and doing specifications, unless that's all counts towards our 25% of it. So that's our, our first grant opportunity. Any questions about that one?
What's the early grant that you get for?
There's, there actually is.
There's a federal grant that MAPC gets, and they make us sign in each time, and it's part of our, our town accounts is the local match, so.
And there actually is a formula to figure it out, everybody here tonight.
I guess, how much do we need this? How much in the past have we said, oh, boy, I wish we had Town Hall up and running, or I wish we had the senior diner up and running? I mean, we do have our shelter, right, which is separate from this.
Sure. So in, in looking at the middle school shelter over the last couple of years, it's a great shelter, great location. However, when that shelter comes up, that's a huge operation. It's not just one or two people coming in and, hey, you know what, we're just going to use a room in the school, something along those lines. What we run into more frequently is you end up with, you know, two or three people that come in today and say, oh, you know, I just need a place to hang out that has power, and then they don't need any more services. So in the past, what we've been doing is, is those people have been going to the police station. The police have been, been great hosts with that, but I think on a few occasions, we've kind of run into issues where, hey, we need the room that those people are now housed in. And in addition, there's not really great facilities there in order to make sure that they have food, you know, a nice hot meal to go along with it. You know, granted, this time of year, you want ice cream, but come January, if there's some sort of disaster, the bowl of soup would be awful nice. So, you know, I think there's certainly some importance to having that legitimate commercial kitchen up that can feed a large number if they need to, but can kind of scale it back. You start firing up the stoves at the high school, you're going to be using a pretty good amount of gas in order to just get them up to temperature, let alone then cook with them, so.
Would this play now into, would this now become part of our shelter operation?
Yeah, absolutely. So this, again, we'd go back to more of those day shelter type situations. It wouldn't be one of those instances where we're going to have people sleeping in Town Hall for three or four days straight. It's geared more towards, hey, you know what, come in for the day, stay warm, stay cool, whatever the case may be. You know, have a place where you can essentially hang out and be able to see and talk to people in light.
We've actually had a couple of meetings on this, and the whole, because of the level of volunteers that are available to run shelters and stuff like that, it's sort of all been designed, and we've all been working together on this to be modular. And this was in the report I initially, remember the report I gave a few months back about dealing with the high school? This was part of that as the, as the first step, the day shelter, the immediate operation with the turnkey for the bigger shelter when you had to go overnight, and that's all I think.
I think I have one. Can you explain, you said that this becomes available after an emergency? And why, I guess they don't understand that condition. Why do they have to wait until a disaster occurs?
It's a great question, and I've never really quite been able to find a good answer for it. There's two grants. There's EMPG, which is Emergency Planning. That's what those two, that's the E one. That one's available every year, doesn't matter if any sort of disasters occur. The HMPG is, you're eligible for that after disasters occur in your area. Not only does, does the grant pay for, or the funding source pay for the reimbursement, so what, I believe, this one is coming from Superstorm Sandy from last, what time was that, last year? August, September, last year? October?
But it's because the, because the grant funding is available only in areas where, that have been declared as disasters, because there's no money made available unless, in this particular category, unless there's been a disaster. An easier example to think of might be, let's say, for a coastal community that was hit hard, that, so that they'll be ready the next time, they could do something to, you know, help, help deal with their coastlines and better mitigate that hazard. That's, you know, that maybe sounds a little more clearer than this one, where, I don't know, were we fortunate enough to qualify for the funding? But that's.
Sounds like pork barrel, and, you know, who's going to, who's going to say no to a grant obligation, you know, grant funding, you know? After an emergency.
We're about to find out.
And the Emergency Planning Grant, do we apply for that annually?
Yes. That's a much smaller money grant. I think there's a comp on that. I want to say it's around $9,000 or $10,000. It's, you know, obviously a much smaller scale, but that's to look at things like buying TV monitors for, so that you can put your smart board displays up there, so that if you're having a planning meeting, that everybody can kind of be on the same page and see the same thing at the same time.
Right, okay.
I think we're on to that one.
Remember to?
Move on to the second one? All right. So the second grant opportunity that we're looking at right now is the staffing for adequate fire emergency response. It's safer. I actually always have to look at what it stands for. This is also a grant that's put out through FEMA, actually, the Department of Homeland Security started this grant opportunity probably about 10 years ago now. This year, there's $320 million available in grants for communities across the country to not only hire firefighters, but also look at recruitment and retention of existing firefighters. So you take a city that's in dire economic shape, that's looking at having to lay off 100 firefighters, this grant opportunity could be used to assist those cities. 15% of this overall grant goes towards hiring new firefighters. So in communities that are growing and in need of additional firefighters, that's what that 15% would be, so about. So about, second one's about $50 million is available for hiring new firefighters. As you were aware, last year during the budget season, Chief Wodzinski laid out a plan for adding additional full-time staffing, not only this fiscal year, but also in July of next year, so fiscal year 15. And this funding source is a way that we can achieve that additional staffing without impacting the town too much. So looking at the grant.
For the next two years, right?
For the next two years, yeah. So this would take us all the way up to 2017, which if you recall is the last of the hires that's planned. We kind of have a year of assessment built in, and then the final year, 2017, is the last batch of hires that's planned for the staffing. So it'll take us right to that time, gives us a good opportunity to get that assessment taken care of. And again, doesn't have a tremendous impact to the community, because that grant will cover all salaries, but also all the fringe benefits that go along with it.
But I was seeing impact when it runs out.
The full $250 plus annually. Basically, we're getting a grant to cover the salaries for the first two fiscal years, and then we get the bill after that. Unlike previous rounds of safer grants, they used to have a retainage period that you needed to keep the employee on. There is no requirement of that, obviously that's the goal, but there is no requirement. In previous rounds, if you laid people off, you'd have to pay the grant back. So that does not exist in this.
So obviously, the fiscal impact would be limited to whatever unemployment we have in the event that we, that we find that we're not able to continue the staffing level in year three, then, and if we don't fill, if we lay those people off, we have whatever unemployment.
So obviously, if you get this grant, just plug into that line item, and then as you're looking at your five-year plan, it comes out at some point, you have to start shuffling money.
I have to fund the funding gap in.
Yeah. So it's, so it's nice, but it's not.
It's heading us in the direction that we were, you know.
But it's again, you know, the big thing is one-time funds for recurring costs, right? I mean, not as big as some, but it's still.
Again, I look at it, it's the opportunity to meet the staffing plan that was presented last year by the Fire Department. So these four people were proposed to be coming on in fiscal 2015. So if we wanted to stick with that, then this is a great opportunity to kind of mitigate those costs for a period of time.
For two years, yeah.
We will own it after that.
Yeah, no, I think, I would hate to, I mean, when I call it free money, I'm just paying it through some other way. But, you know, I hate to turn down money from the town, but I just, we just have to make sure we plan for that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know at this point how competitive the application's gonna be. We do know that the application deadline is August 30th. So that if we want to try to get the funding, then we need to act promptly.
One of the other pieces with this is that we do have the opportunity to go through kind of the beginning of the budget cycle before they'll start awarding grants. So if we hit the first couple weeks of the budget and say, yeah, you know what? Things are just looking awful, we have that ability to pull the grant back and say, nope, we're gonna withdraw our application. So, you know, at the earliest, we'd find out sometime early next year whether we are receiving the grant. Lots of times, they're running out of about a year, though.
All right. I'm done. Any others?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize submission of the following grant applications to the Federal Emergency Management Administration. Number one, for $125,000 for a backup generator for the town office building under the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And number two, for $513,183.96 for the Littleton Fire Department to hire four full-time firefighters/ANTs for a period of two years under the Staffing for Adequate Fire Emergency Response Program.
And move in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you for that explanation. All right. Now we're going to the tax title of butter lot sales program.
We will be having a total of six parcels to act on. Three are ready for tonight, three more will be ready next Monday night. These were all part of the program that was approved by Town Meeting. The treasurer received proposals from the three properties involved here from the butters, and we're asking the Board to take the necessary vote to award those to the butters.
Sure. No, I'll do it. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Article 10 of the November 14, 2011, Special Town Meeting, and Article 19 of the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting, and in accordance with the Tax Title of Butter Lot Sales Program adopted on December 5, 2011, to approve the sale of the following tax titled parcels and the execution by the Board of Selectmen of deed prepared by Town Council. Number one, lot U12-110-0 comprised of 0.092 acres, 400.1 square feet on Narcissus Road to a butter Evelyn Doran for a sale price of $4,323.74. Number two, lot U12-151-0 comprised of 0.046 acres, 2,000 square feet on Shaker Lane to a butter Kevin Fitzsimmons for a sale price of $2,449.69. And number three, lot U14-10-0 comprised of 0.110 acres, 4,799.9 square feet on Shaker Lane to a butter Nancy M. Mongelli, trustee of the Mongelli Trust Investment, for a sale price of $5,612.55.
Second. Motion in the main and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There's some paperwork.
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right.
Collective bargaining. And we're an open session. You could vote to go into executive session, but I think we're, there's no, there's no secrets about this. Last fall, we reached agreements with Police Fire Dispatch along certain lines. And tonight, we're pleased to add Highway Union to that group. The financial parameters are the same basic agreement as we reached with those prior groups. Three-year deal, implementing the Pay and Class Plan, no cost of living adjustments during the three-year life of the contract, implementing the new limited sick leave policy, and providing for pay on a bi-weekly rather than weekly basis. In the case of those three contracts that were previously, we had to bring the funding for year one to Special Town Meeting, and in accordance with the statute, we need to do the same thing with this one, that the Board's vote to ratify this contract would be subject to funding at our November 2013 Special Town Meeting. The, the only difference, or noteworthy difference from the previous agreements is that during the course of mediation with the Highway Union, an idea was floated, which actually seemed like a pretty good idea to do regarding the sick leave policy. And it was essentially that the town convene a group, agree to convene a group, to issue a non-binding report prior to our next round of bargaining, to see how it's going, to see just how the limited sick leave benefit is going. And the suggestion was made to, that the Sick Leave Advisory Committee comprised, be comprised of representatives of all four of the unions, plus the non-union, and the non-union bylaw employees, and the department heads. And basically, that, you know, that's pretty close to the group that we convene regularly to discuss health insurance issues. So it was an excellent suggestion, the mediator made it. We agreed to include that as part of our proposal, and we'll be happy to carry that forward. But delighted with this development, that we have this contract agreement forward that is the same deal as was reached with the union people and the non-union.
Sounds good. Jim, make it a second.
I just have a couple of questions. What's TD? I know what the EO is, 'cause I found that in the memory of the agreement.
Wrong.
Oh, okay, very good. And what is this, General Cornman's Callouts? What is that? What is a callout, a General Cornman's Callouts?
He's the person they call for all issues that stand by, let's get. Like, he's, the police call him for all the strange things.
Okay. And was Attorney Dolan the mediator, or the union's attorney?
No, he was the town's attorney. Yeah, Jack Dolan is the, is the town's Labor Council.
Oh, so Harrington does not do this sort of work as well?
No.
I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have separate, a couple of minute pages of Labor Council.
No, thank you.
No, I think it's great news. I think makes everybody, most of the place, consistent. And I think it's a great move that we've been working toward. So appreciate everyone's hard work.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to ratify the contract with Ashby Council 93 Local 1703, Littleton Highway, period of July 1, 23, 2012, through June 30, 2015, including implementation of the Classification Compensation Plan Study, with no cost of living adjustments during the life of the contract, limitation of sick leave, and providing for pay on a bi-weekly rather than weekly basis, and to further vote pursuant to Master Law, Chapter 150, Subsection 7B, to submit to the next Special Town Meeting a request for the appropriation necessary to the fund the cost items contained therein.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. You didn't?
You didn't get me any, you may have mine.
Thank you.
I'm keeping mine.
I understand.
And I don't have to call you up to ask me.
All right. 8B. Bonnie, put a reason, we have a staffing review.
Basically, this is a vacancy review. Yes, a vacancy review for the Wellness Coordinator position in the Department of Elder and Human Services. A little bit of history on this. The position was previously held by Pamela Campbell, who is now our director. So this is a happy occasion. But basically, Pamela held that position as a contract position, a vendor. And in review with council, that really, it's not the type of position that qualifies as a vendor position at all. There's a lot of direction that's applied by the Council on Aging Director, the Director of Elder and Human Services, over the day-to-day activities. It just, it doesn't qualify as a vendor position. So the position was, a job description was drafted and brought to personnel. They ranked it, graded it, and I believe it came in at a grade seven. So based on that information and the amount of funding that's available, the Wellness Coordinator position would be for about seven hours a week. It's a little bit less than what Pam was hoping to get, based on hiring out as a, as a contract person, but it is what it is. The cons of this is that it's a department employee now at this point. It's a non-benefit eligible employee, so there'd be no impact to the health insurance budget in any manner. However, it is a, another position that's included in the TDS FTEs. So there are other impacts that could be felt. For example, if the grant is not funded next year, it could affect unemployment minimally, but it could have an impact. I know that the department feels that this position is very important to their overall service levels, so we'll take it from there.
Right. Bonnie, as pointed out, that it's really important to us to have the wellness person. It reaches a different group and tries to reach a different group. It reaches a slightly more active senior, slightly younger senior, and addresses a lot of educational needs. Some of the activities last year included bringing in a speaker for, aimed at families and caregivers of Alzheimer patients and dementia patients, very well received. The Wellness Coordinator did the Wellness Fair, which offered screening for a lot of different areas, vision, hearing, it gave free flu shots, but also, again, opened up a whole range of different kinds of wellness activities to people. And it was very clear from the crowd that came in for that, that was held on a Saturday, that we had a very different group that was coming in than we normally see for Council on Aging. With the emphasis that we now have on elder and human services, and the emphasis on trying to do outreach to a wider population than just the senior population, it's really hard to do without someone with disability in those areas.
And the board?
Yeah, well, it's also in line with two of our goals this year with respect to the bikes and pedestrians, and to establish a wellness program for our community. So I think it's essential that we continue with it.
When I was a Wellness Coordinator, I was also part of the Wellness Committee, which the town has put together, and again, in an effort to address that, which had lots of initiatives, but again, with some emphasis and some outreach, and made available to people.
And to let people know, it's not just for Council on Aging folks, it's also for anyone else. Thank you.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to grant Director of Elder and Human Services a question under the Staffing and Baking Review Policy, fill a temporary part-time, 7.25 hours per week, grant funding position of the Wellness Coordinator.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Conservation, Recreation, and Land Exchange. How long has this thing been going on?
It's, this has been going on for a while, and we're at an important point now that you recall that the May 6 Town Meeting voted to authorize a Home Rule Petition for the land exchange. And prior to that, the Conservation Commission and Park and Rec, they both signed on to it. Procedurally, in order, by the time that we submit our request to the state legislature, what we wanted to make sure that we had the support of the state administrative agency that was going to pass judgment on it, on behalf of the legislature. And so we've been working with, with the state's staff for the last several months, and have, and have had them review the proposed land exchange, what the maps look like, what the proposed uses are, and they have signed off on it as being consistent with their regulations. And the reason, the other reason that that's important is because we also have a state, we have a grant application pending with the same state agency for the Church Meadows property. And one of the conditions is you have to be in compliance with the state regulations in order to be eligible for the grant. So it was doubly important that not only was the way clear for this legislative petition to go forward, that is finding that we're not reducing open space, and you know, that we're managing the property appropriately, but that we wanted to be competitive in our grant application. So it's taken a while. The next step is to formally submit the proposed special act, or filing by our state representative, and we'll continue to work with the state, getting it through the process.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Article 14 of the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting to petition the General Court for special legislation set forth there in authorizing a land exchange between the Conservation Commission and the Park and Recreation Commission.
Okay, we're moving to second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Just one thing, I only have two deeds here.
I know, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I misplaced the last one.
You're right.
There's a sign here on that one there, little sticker.
Yeah, these are more for that, actually, for the yet-metis contracts.
So this.
We'll be together next week, too, so.
Bring that one back, I'm sorry.
And I think that there are three at the end.
Hi there, Mr. Chair. The minutes for the Board of Selectmen from Monday, July 8th, any comments, concerns?
Nope.
Now we make a motion to approve the board of selectmen minutes for Monday, July 8, 113.
Can you? Board there.
I wasn't?
No.
For what date?
July 8. The town school says. I make a motion that we go ahead and approve the minutes from July 8. Ed, Alex, Kira, Wayan, and that. Joe was absent.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I? Oops, we're in the middle of that, yeah.
A second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can we record on our minutes for major? Sure. Because we were there really late on the 8th, we should get full credit.
Especially if we can get in-kind services that we want.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This was a chock full agenda tonight, people.
Well, we got, we got quite a stuff on 16th, too. So.
All right.
Yeah, good.
We're having a design. Thank you.
Probably to own the house up in Bridgeton.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with place on wellness.